Good evening, I'd like to call the May 12th, 2025 Borough Council Youth and Government Meeting to order. Will the clerk please read the open public meeting statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as required under Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, specifying the time, date, and location by posting a copy of the notice on the municipal building, municipal website, providing a copy of the annual notice schedule to the official newspapers of the borough, and is filed in the clerk's office.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Rascallo.
Present.
Councilwoman Paulson.
Present.
Councilwoman Algeria.
Present.
Councilwoman Yasudis.
Present.
Councilman Quackenbush.
Present.
Councilwoman Cooper.
Present.
Mayor Zing.
Present.
Borough Attorney Mindo Rashvili.
Present.
Borough Administrator Ayers.
Present.
Borough Engineer Lou Plaskanka.
Present.
Borough Clerk Monica Orlando, present.
Will everyone please stand for a moment of silence, which will be followed by the salute to the class. Tonight, we have, we have several proclamations to read on behalf of Mayor Murray. At this time, I'd like to invite the Milltown Police Department to accept the proclamation for National Police Week presented by Councilwoman Yasudis.
Good evening, I am reading this proclamation for National Police Week on behalf of Mayor George Murray. Whereas there are more than eight hundred thousand law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Milltown Police Department. Whereas since the first recorded death in seventeen eighty-six, there are currently more than twenty-four thousand law enforcement officers in the United States that have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in line of duty. Whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington DC. Whereas three hundred forty-five new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, including one hundred forty-eight officers killed in two thousand twenty-four and one hundred ninety-seven officers killed in previous years. Whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's thirty-seventh candlelit vigil on the evening of May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Whereas the candlelit vigil is part of National Police Week, which will be observed this year, May eleventh through seventeenth. Whereas May fifteenth is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day. In honor of all fallen officers and their families, an US flag should be flown at half staff. Now therefore it be resolved that I, Mayor George Murray, along with the Borough Council of the Borough of Milltown, will observe May eleventh through seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five, as National Police Week in Milltown. And we publicly salute the service of national law enforcement officers in our community and in the communities across the nation.
Thank you Councilwoman Yasudis. At this time, I'd like to invite the Milltown Rescue Squad to accept the proclamation for National EMS Week presented by the Borough Administrator Jordan Ayers.
Good evening, I am reading this proclamation for Emergency Medical Services Week on behalf of Mayor George Murray. Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those who need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas emergency medical services fills healthcare gaps by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. And whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating the Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor George Murray, and the Borough Council of the Borough of Milltown, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May eighteenth to twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, as Emergency Medical Services Week. And we thank the Milltown Rescue Squad for their tireless dedication to the residents of Milltown Borough and surrounding towns.
If you visit our open house, it's going to be the Sunday, May eighteenth, from noon to four. We'd love to have everybody, all ages, just come in for all. If anybody has any questions on how they can support us or join. If you visit our website or stop by, you'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank you guys.
Thank you, Ms. Ayers. At this time, I'd like to, tuned by Ralph Giss and Nout. From the Department of Public Works to accept the proclamation for National Public Works Week presented by Councilman Quackenbush.
Good evening, I am reading this proclamation for National Public Work Week on behalf of Mayor George Murray. Public work professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainability and resilient communities and to public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Borough of Milltown. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedication efforts of public working professionals, where engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in public interest for citizens, civic leaders, and children in the Borough of Milltown to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public work and public works programs in their respective communities. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor George Murray of the Borough Council of the Borough of Milltown, do hereby designate the week of May eighteenth to twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, as National Public Work Week. I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public work professionals, engineers, and managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our nation's health, safety, and advancing quality of life for all.
Thank you Councilman Quackenbush. At this time, I'd like to invite Jill Hawkins from the Milltown Education Foundation up to the podium to give a presentation of upcoming events.
Hi everybody, it's so nice to see so many familiar faces up here from in the school system. Just to introduce myself, my name is Jill Hetzler. I am the president of the Milltown Education Foundation. Our organization has existed for over the last twenty years within our community and has helped to support the teachers, the students, and the staff of both Parkview and Joyce Kilmer schools. I'm even excited to tell you that many of our council people who are up here today and even in the past have also served as committee and chair within that organization as well. Each year, we write a letter requesting that we use the use of public facilities for a couple of our fundraising events. This year, we have asked to possibly waive those fees. It is becoming more important than ever as a lot of budgets are being cut across the state and the country for educational purposes to allow us to be able to hold those fundraisers, to continue to build those funds, to put back into our schools. So this past year, we have actually had our biggest banner year yet of awarding grants within both Parkview and Joyce Kilmer schools, topping over seven thousand dollars. We're happy to say that in our account at most times is anywhere in upwards of a couple of thousand, but we're spending more than we have ever because of the need being so great. This past year, we were able to put in the Kibo robot kits to all of the students at Parkview School, STEM boxes for all third grade students, animal experience add-ons and planetarium experiences for both the third and second grade student field trips. We have implemented seat stacks for the fifth grade students who change classes for the first time. We have helped to offset the Blue Ribbon Schools application for the process of Joyce Kilmer School, which was just finalized. Congratulations Joyce Kilmer School. We have provided Wonder Book sets for both Parkview and Joyce Kilmer School, which allow for our ELL students as well as those who are struggling to learn to read to be able to sustain and bring that into the light. We have provided Apple pens for some JK classrooms. We have provided some more shelving for fifth grade classrooms that was necessary. Classroom libraries have been enhanced across the district. Both JK and Parkview's faculty rooms have both had some very much needed facelifts and decor as well as new coffee machines for both buildings. And we've also had the Engagement Engineer Plus membership for eighth grade math students be implemented within the curriculum within Joyce Kilmer School. Flexible seating is almost complete for all of Parkview's classrooms, and we also have two additional classrooms at Joyce Kilmer School that benefit from that flexible seating as well. Within the funds that we put together each year, it also allows us to provide for two eighth grade awards, which are little scholarship awards that go out on that eighth grade awards night. So we're able to do that again, as well as provide free events for our community like the Color Dash, and also provide gifts for our Teacher of the Year and our Educational of the Year Specialist. So all of that comes out of our funding pretty much each and every year, but this year was our biggest to go through. As we all know, we have our Oktoberfest for education in town. That is one of our biggest fundraisers, that's what brings up the most money for us, but then we're able to put it right back into our community for many other things that go on throughout the year. The two specific dates that we're requesting that fee be waived for is for our clothing drive, both in the spring and in election time, and then also for trunk or treat, which is another nice community event that brings everybody together, but then also raises some funds for our school as well. So I just want to say thank you always for your support. We're so glad that we've been able to do this for so long and be able to see so many additions and changes go into the schools because the budget doesn't always cover that. So thank you so much. Do you guys have any questions for me? We do have our own insurance, so we do carry that liability insurance for when we have those activities on the public grounds as well as within the school settings as well. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Hawkins. Now, now is the time for public comment limited to the resolutions on the agenda. If you wish to speak, please step up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Again, this public portion is limited to comments only on resolutions listed on the agenda at this time. Seeing none, I will close this public comment portion of the meeting. The following ordinance was introduced on April twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five, and published in accordance with the law. If any member of the public wishes to comment on this ordinance, they may do so after the reading. Will the clerk please read ordinance two-five-dash-one-five-five-nine by title?
Ordinance to amend Chapter fourteen, Parks and Recreation, Section six, Borough Pool Subsection six point three fees and Section seven Recreation Programs Subsection seven point two, Fees of Revised General Ordances of the Borough of Milltown, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey.
May I have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance two-five-dash-one-five-five-nine?
I make a motion that ordinance twenty-five-dash-fifteen-fifty-nine be adopted on second reading and published according to the law.
I second this motion.
I have a motion by Council President Rascallo and a second by Councilman Quackenbush. I will now open the public hearing on ordinance two-five-dash-one-five-five-nine. Please state your name and address for the record. These comments are limited to comments on this ordinance only. Seeing none, I will close this public comment portion of the meeting. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Rascallo.
Yes.
Councilwoman Paulson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Algeria.
Yes.
Councilwoman Yasudis.
Yes.
Councilman Quackenbush.
Yes.
Councilwoman Cooper.
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt ordinance twenty-five-dash-fifteen-fifty-nine.
Next on the agenda, we have authorizing payment of municipal obligations. Will the clerk please read the resolution by type?
Resolution twenty-two-five-dash-one-six-seven, authorizing the payment of bills, claims, and statements against the Borough of Milltown in a total amount of one million, three hundred and seventy-five thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars and twenty-six cents.
Council, you have heard the reading of this resolution. What is your pleasure?
I make a motion to approve the bill list resolution, two thousand twenty-five-dash-sixteen-seven as typed.
I second this motion.
I have a motion by Council President Rascallo and a second by Councilwoman Cooper. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Rascallo.
Yes.
Councilwoman Paulson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Algeria.
Yes.
Councilwoman Yasudis.
Yes.
Councilman Quackenbush.
Yes.
Councilwoman Cooper.
Yes.
The motion to approve Resolution twenty-two-five-dash-one-six-seven carries.
Now is the time for the consent agenda. A consent resolution has been prepared for the resolutions listed on the agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and having been reviewed by the Borough Council will be enacted by one motion. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any council member, and if so removed, will be treated as a separate matter. Any items requiring expenditure.
Expenditure.
Expenditure are supported by a certification of funds. If any member of the council wants any resolution acted upon individually, please give me the resolution number and it will be pulled from the consent resolution. Will the clerk please read the consent agenda resolution?
Whereas pursuant to the rules of council, the council may establish a consent agenda for any regular or special meetings upon certain conditions. And whereas each of the following resolutions to be presented before the Borough Council at its May twelfth, two thousand twenty-five meeting appear to have the unanimous approval of all members of the Borough Council, twenty-two-five-dash-one-sixty-nine through two thousand twenty-five-dash-one-eighty-two. Now therefore be resolved by the Borough Council of the Borough of Milltown that each of the above listed resolutions be approved and adopted by the Borough Council with the same legal effect as though each were written in its entirety at its May twelfth, two thousand twenty-five meeting and adopted by separate vote.
You have heard the reading of this consent resolution. What is your pleasure?
I make a motion that this resolution be adopted.
I second this motion.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Yasudis and a second by Councilwoman Paulson. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Rascallo.
Yes.
Councilwoman Paulson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Algeria.
Yes.
Councilwoman Yasudis.
Yes.
Councilman Quackenbush.
Yes.
Councilman Quackenbush.
Yes.
Councilwoman Cooper.
Yes.
The motion to approve Consent Agenda Resolution carries.
Now we have the report from our elected officials. Council President Riscalla.
Thank you, Mayor Zink. For Finance Committee, as you know, our council adopted the two thousand twenty-five municipal budget on April twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-five. Now we are working on meeting with various departments to budget for capital expenses such as new vehicles and nine-one-one console equipment. For Personnel Committee, tonight we authorized the hiring of our summer recreation employees. We are excited to get to see everyone at Borough Pool and Albert Avenue Summer Camp this season. We do have some employment opportunities within the borough. If you are interested in employing, please go to the borough website. Select our borough from the top menu line, then Employment Opportunities. The Human Relation Committee met on May sixth via Zoom. Our next meeting is Tuesday, June third, via Zoom. The next Ford Avenue Redevelopment Agency meeting is rescheduled for Tuesday, May twentieth, here at Borough Hall. Revitalization Committee is working to plan the best Milltown day yet. Our meeting is scheduled via Zoom on Tuesday, May tenth, and that concludes my report, Mayor Zink.
Thank you, President Riscalla. Councilwoman Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. The Environmental Commission held its Earth Day cleanup and fair at Mill Pond Park on Saturday, May tenth. Thank you to all those who joined, and a special thank you to the DPW for all of your assistance. The Board of Health is hosting a free rabies clinic in conjunction with Middlesex County. It will be on Tuesday, May twenty-seventh, from six PM to eight PM at our DPW building. Dogs and cats are welcome. This clinic is open and free to all Middlesex County residents, and that concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Paulson. Councilwoman Algerio.
Thank you, Mayor Zink. For the Electric Department, winds knocked over a dead tree on Columbia Ave., and it landed in a primary wire. Department members removed that tree off the live wires and had to replace a primary dead end that had broken. A project to add a transformer on Violet Terrace was completed. The existing circuit was split in half to reduce the load on existing transformer, and a new transformer was installed on a new pole. Two streetlights were repaired, one replaced with energy-efficient LED fixtures. Department members assisted Milltown Public Schools in tracing out a broken fire optic cable that was connected Joyce Kilmer School to Parkview School. The break was due to a fallen tree next to the old Wells Fargo Bank. The Utilities Department training area was disassembled to relocate it to a new area. Department members wired the new DPW portable ticket booth so that it can be put in service. Line clearance was performed in several hotspot areas. A pole was installed for the Milltown Fire Department adjacent to their garage. Inspections were performed on poles in various areas. More replacements are being planned. The Utility Department assisted in billing department with customer issues. We are replacing electric meters where necessary. For the Water slash Sewer Department, the Milltown Water and Sewer Department oversees all water and waste that flows through the pipes in our town. Some of the responsibilities include daily work orders that include changing old meters for new, markouts, which is the blue and green paint used to show where water and sewer lines are located, answering any emergencies that occur, like water main breaks, conduct pump checks each day at our stations, which are located on Elkins Lane, Church Street, Riva Avenue, and Brook Drive, to make sure they're working correctly. The water tower by Home Depot is also checked each day, and that concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Algerio. Councilwoman Yasudas.
Thank you, Mayor Zink. For the Police Department, between April first, two thousand twenty-five and April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, police responded to one thousand one hundred twenty-four calls for service. During this period, the police conducted one hundred fifteen radar details in numerous locations. Police made three hundred forty-three motor vehicle stops during this period. Police investigated twelve motor vehicle accidents. Police conducted traffic studies in the following locations after receiving speeding complaints from residents: Highland Drive, Hill Street, South Main Street Turnpike Bridge. Police are continuing to monitor these locations and are issuing summonses to speeding motorists. On the fifteen days of school in March, police covered twenty-eight crosswalk posts. Eighteen arrests were made, six shoplifting, six DWIs, three active warrants, one simple assault, one criminal mischief, and one possession of weapons. During the month of April, patrol officers Nicholas Espinoza and Robert Worley were commended for their actions in handling a violent call for service, where they encountered a group fighting at the Albert Avenue Park. Detective Sergeant Plama was commended for dedication, hard work, and initiative by completing projects within the police department that improved our operational readiness. As of April second, two thousand twenty-five, there are currently five individuals who have been issued solicitor permit identification guards by the Borough of Milltown through the police department. These permits were issued to individuals who are working for a home remodeling company. If not displayed, you should ask any individual who comes to your door to show you their permit. The IG card will display their photo, name, company, title, issue date, and expiration date. Each solicitor must pay a fee and go through a criminal background check to obtain a borough-issued solicitor permit. When in doubt, call us out. Do not become the victim of a scam. Community involvement is crucial in maintaining a more secure environment. We strongly encourage you to assist us by reporting any suspicious persons, vehicles, or incidents that you may come across. Our non-emergency line is seven three two eight two eight one one zero zero. In case of emergencies, always dial nine one one. For Milltown Fire Department, in the month of April, the Milltown Fire Department responded to sixteen fire calls and six special assignments. This most notably included a garage fire on North Main Street, a standby in South River, and a warehouse fire in Seville, where they operated along with many other fire companies. On May fourth, the Fire Department participated in a live burn training drill at the Middlesex County Fire Academy. Members are needed. Candidates interested in joining the Milltown Fire Department are encouraged to stop by the firehouse on Monday nights at six thirty PM or email joinmilltownfire@gmail.com. For the Milltown Rescue Squad, for the month of April, the Milltown Rescue Squad responded to sixty calls in the Milltown Borough, eleven calls to the New Jersey Turnpike, three rehab calls, and eleven mutual aid calls. The squad is looking to recruit new talent to join our ranks. We are accepting applications for our summer onboarding. Anyone interested in learning about joining the Rescue Squad or becoming an EMT should email recruitment at milltownrescue squad dot org. Applications for July two thousand twenty-five need to be submitted by June fifteenth. If anyone has any billing questions, please call Cornerstone or Billing Company with any questions or concerns. Their number is one eight seven seven two one four six zero one eight. You can also access them through our website, milltownrescue squad dot org. Please do not call the Milltown Police Department with billing questions or recruitment questions. That concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Yasudas. Councilman Quackenbush.
Thank you, Mayor Zink. For the Department of Public Works, laptop repair was done on previous water main breaks on JFK, Hill Street, and Clay Street. Albert Avenue Soccer Field was painted in preparation for the start of the rec soccer season. DPW staff assisted and participated in the Earth Day setup and cleanup and prep the field and grounds for the Spotswood High School baseball game at Michelin Field. Staff prepped Field Number Two for the high school girls' softball game. The quarterly outfall pipe cleaning inspections were completed to meet DEP stormwater regulations. We installed topsoil and level area along Parkview parking lot as shared part of a service agreement. Removed trees and cleared brush at Mill Pond Park path. Installed new signs at the Pardon Tennis Facility. And the two thousand twenty-four annual recycling and toning report has been submitted to the DEP, and the mandated annual stormwater report has also been submitted in conjunction with the CNB. For the Senior Center, the following are upcoming activities at the Senior Center. You must sign onto the bulletin board to attend these activities. On Tuesday, May twentieth, at ten forty-five AM, there's a bus trip to Shrimp Box. And Tuesday, May twenty-seventh, at eleven thirty AM, a bus trip to Xena's Bistro. The following are upcoming events that are at the Senior Center, and that all are welcome to attend. No sign of this required. On Tuesday, May thirteenth, at one thirty PM, you will have a presentation for the Milltown Rescue Squad. Thursday, May twenty-second, at one PM, question and answer with our police liaison, Nick Olenchinsky. The VNA nurse will be available for appointments on Tuesday, Monday twentieth, from twelve PM to three PM. This service is available for Milltown seniors free of charge each month. Please sign up on the bulletin board if you are interested. We will have a weekly lunch program on Wednesdays at twelve thirty, sponsored by Logis Promise. We will continue collecting unopened dog and cat food, kitty litter, and unused toys and accessories for animal shelters throughout the year, and that concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Quackenbush.
Thank you, Mayor Zink. For Recreation, summer chess registration is now open. The session will begin on June second and on June thirtieth. Please visit Community Pass to register. Join us at the Senior Center for fun cartoon drawing sessions this summer. Classes start on June thirteenth and end on July twenty-fifth. There will be no class on July fourth. Summer employment interviews have begun. We no longer accept applications for the season. The Dog Coed Softball League has six teams this season, and they're having a great time. The championship game will be held on June twelfth. It's time to consider Sunshine and Poolside. Borough Pool memberships will go on sale this week. To purchase your badge, please visit Community Pass. Registration for Albert Avenue Camp and CIT begins on May thirteenth and ends on June fifteenth. Albert Avenue Camp is set to begin on Monday, June thirtieth. The Borough Pool is set open soon after completing a fall project and preparing for the season. As spring approaches, don't forget to get in touch with your Recreation Department to secure your date to rent Albert Avenue Park. After you secure your date, you can complete the fillable application on the Recreation website. We thank everyone who came up to support the Spotswood High School baseball game on Tuesday, May sixth. For the planning board, our next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, June fourth, at seven PM. For the Milltown Fourth of July Organization, with less than two months away from the big day, the Milltown Fourth of July Organization thanks everyone for their continued support. Don't forget to participate in our Super Fifty-Fifty raffle. Limited tickets are still available. If you wish to be a sponsor or participate in the parade, please visit our Milltown Fourth of July website, or follow us on Facebook and Instagram. That concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cooper. Now we have a report from our Borough Professionals. Borough Engineer Lou Pliscon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Two items to report tonight. The first regarding the Northbrook Drive improvements. We're pleased to report the paving work has been completed, and in the coming weeks, we'll be meeting with property owners who have had street trees removed to discuss replacement tree types and locations. Secondly, with regard to the meter replacement project, the work is progressing. One thousand two hundred and thirty-three meters have been replaced to date, which equates to approximately forty-eight percent of the total, and forty-six four thousand, excuse me, four hundred and sixty-nine meters are currently scheduled. And that concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Borough Engineer Lou Pliscon. Borough Attorney Keddie Vindras Valley.
Thank you, Mayor. The Borough has recently received a number of requests for the installation of improvements on Borough property. In light of this fact, it might be beneficial to create a formal process for such a request to be submitted and considered by the mayor and council. This process could include a form identifying the relevant information needed by the board in order to consider the request. Please let me know if this is something that you would like to pursue, and I can begin the process. Additionally, I am working with the Borough Planner and Special Litigation Legal Counsel to address the Borough's fourth round affordable housing obligation. I anticipate providing an update at your next council meeting concerning this issue. Finally, I have received a request from the tax collector for assistance in the preparation of an ordinance establishing an exemption policy for disabled veterans and their surviving spouses. I anticipate providing a draft for the ordinance for your consideration at your next council meeting, and that concludes my report, Mayor Zink.
Thank you, Borough Attorney Keddie Vindras Valley. Borough Administrator Jordan Neers.
Thank you, Mayor. From the Milltown Library, the following are events for the month of May. Tuesday, May thirteenth and twenty-seventh, drop-in play at ten thirty AM. Tuesday, May thirteenth, at six thirty PM, library board meeting that is open to the public. Wednesday, May fourteenth, movie matinee at two PM. Thursday, May fifteenth, craft corner at three PM. Saturday, May seventeenth, breakfast art club, grades kindergarten to third, at ten thirty AM, and read to a pooch at twelve thirty PM. Monday, May nineteenth, adult yoga at nine fifteen AM, and writing club at eleven AM. Tuesday, May twentieth, Medicare one-on-one at one PM, tween craft at three PM, and flower power bingo at six PM. Wednesday, May twenty-first, movie matinee at two PM. Thursday, May twenty-second, after-school jeopardy at three PM. Tuesday, May twenty-seven, after-school, game on at three PM, and library book club at six PM. The library will be closed on Saturday, May twenty-fourth and May twenty-sixth. The staff wishes everyone a safe weekend, and we honor the fallen. And that concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you, Borough Administrator Jordan Neers. Borough Clerk Lonnie Corrigan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a reminder that June tenth is the primary election. Postcards went out to those residents that reside within District Three and District Four to notify you of your polling location change. So you should have received that postcard. When you get your sample ballot, it will show your polling location on there as well. And the only other announcement I had was our new Borough Clerk has started. Gretchen McCarthy is sitting to my left here. I didn't want to turn over a Youth and Government meeting to have her run this for her first council meeting, so I stuck around for that, but you will see her running the next council meeting, hopefully with me by her side. I will slowly be transitioning out, and that concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Borough Clerk Lonnie Corrigan. At this time, I'm going to ask Mayor Murray to take over the meeting and request the council to confirm their actions taken at this meeting by the passage of Resolution two thousand twenty-five dash one eighty-three.
Thank you, Mayor Zink. Borough Clerk, please read Resolution twenty twenty-five dash one eighty-three by title.
Approving the actions taken by student representatives during the May twelfth, two thousand twenty-five Youth and Government Council meeting.
You have heard the reading of this resolution. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I proudly make a motion that this resolution be adopted.
I second that motion.
I have a motion made by Councilman Potter, seconded by Council President Zambrana. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana.
Aye.
Councilwoman Collins.
Aye.
Councilwoman Manko.
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne.
Aye.
Councilwoman Poznansky.
Aye.
Councilwoman Potter.
Aye.
The public comment portion of our meeting is allowed public to break to the council's attention or concerns or comments. The council will respect public's time by restraining any comment until the speaker is finished. It should be further noted that the public comment portion of our meeting is not structured as a question and answer session. Please state your name and address for the record when you come to the podium.
Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion of the meeting. I have two quick ones that I would like to echo Councilwoman Algerio's about. Mr. Eckert finding the break in the fiber line between Parkview and Joyce Kilmer so our students and teachers could get back to business. So thank you, Mr. Eckert. And I would also thank all the youth and the staff that made this a wonderful day for the Youth and Government meeting to take place. So I guess we turn it back over to Mayor Zink.
At this time, I will like, I, oh, sorry. Thank you, Mayor Murray. At this time, I will entertain a motion from the council to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I second.
I have a motion from Councilwoman Cooper and a second by Councilwoman Algerio. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved, meeting adjourned. So moved, meeting adjourned.
Get them all together, guys. We'll have the council here.